Please sign with yourself. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Melanie, is there any additions or deletions?
No, Derek.
Kevin, let's go ahead and roll with you so you can... unless you want to stay all day.
No, thanks. Um, which would you want to go with the bridge quote first? I don't know which one was on there first.
It doesn't matter, just go with you.
We can get, we can go with these bridge quotes first. So, we had some damages here, um, last summer and this past, I guess you'd call it winter, last fall, the end of the calendar year. The two bridges in the county, um, Bill Street in Paisley, the bridge at the end of, uh, our County Road, and then, um, on Pitcher Lane, about two miles north of, um, thirty-one, Route thirty-one there on Pitcher Lane, right where the gravel starts. Those two bridges, uh, damaged to the point where they need to be repaired through contract. So, I actually had, um, uh, our engineer draw up these two bridges very similarly, similar damages, um, as a, um, co-opted job so that we could get entice contractors from out here. Three quotes, uh, one from Coral Construction, one from Columbia River Contractors, and one from Gadget Construction. Gadget Construction is the parent low bidder. Hundred and eighty-four thousand, five hundred and thirty-six dollars and twenty-five cents for both structures. And you can see that in front of you separately. Paisley structure is a hundred and eleven thousand and forty-six dollars, and the Silver Lake structure is seventy-three thousand, four hundred and ninety. Gadget Construction is who fixed the bridge in Plush when we had that similar problem two, two seasons ago. They did an excellent job for us, so there's... And they are, and they are the little bidder. Um, everybody, all three contractors bid on the exact same construction documents. So that we have, uh, two jobs and, uh, separately quoted so that, what's possible to recoup from the insurance companies, we'd have to have that separate, separate, so. You guys have any questions?
I don't have any.
Traffic control agency is, it, it's actually partially now on Gadget Construction. So, basically, you won't have to mess with any of the traffic control or they take care of it.
Yeah, this is, this, this is a total contract job. My, um, road authorities', um, responsibility in this would just be to ensure through inspection that they're doing the design. But like I said, um, and, and we will, we'll, either myself or, um, Mark or Tyler, will visit this project throughout the time period. But what these fellows did over here on that structure in, in Plush, they're top quality outfits, so.
Sounds good.
I'd like to, I don't know, is it, are you guys gonna, um, vote on this tomorrow to go? I'd like to at least be able to call them today and tell them who the apparent low bidder is. Maybe not that you awarded it, but if I was gonna do it today.
Yeah.
Or through consensus or how, or however. I'd like to call them back because literally, even though it's just one day, time is of the essence right now with this cost of steel and supplies and all that stuff, so.
I'll go ahead and I'll make an actual formal motion, uh, for approval and awarding of the bid for a bridge, for bridges both in Paisley and on Pitcher Road, um, to Gadget Construction LLC. Second.
This has been made the second until we have further discussion. I'm gonna open a little bit of the can, so.
Okay.
Um, I'm, I'm not going against your deal at all. But this is the third and fourth bridge that's been damaged in the last couple of years. And we originally didn't sue for civil damages. But what's happened is it's costing the county close to a quarter of a million dollars altogether, maybe even a little bit more than that. I think from this point on, maybe we need to look into that. Because we can't afford to lose two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar apartment. Because that's two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars that isn't going to road work. And so it affects the whole county. Nobody wants to sue for civil damages, but, um, we need to try to recoup some of these costs. I don't know, I just wanted to discuss that with you guys.
It's definitely a can worms. It's, it's sad because when we are spending these amount of dollars and to your point, not being able to put these dollars on the road, it's because, at least from what I can see, negligence, negligence on the part of another one person or two or three that, you know, make these mistakes and it's costing us and the taxpayers of Lake County a tremendous amount. So there's a balance in there somewhere, I'm not entirely sure where that is. It's a good thing to keep at the forefront of our minds as we go through this. But it, it needs to be addressed.
I just wanted to make sure the public knows how expensive these bridges are when somebody runs into them.
Yeah.
It's one thing if you're swerving for a deer or something hit a bridge accidentally, then drinking beer, driving down the road, cramping the bridge, you know. Just my thoughts.
I, I can keep you updated because this, I mean, even though we're awarding this, uh, thank you for that. Um, I can keep you updated on what the actual balance will be again because this information goes to individual insurance, um, claims reps and then we get notified of what the minimum personal liability is on everybody's insurance.
Minimum or maximum?
Well, I guess I'm calling the minimum because twenty-five thousand dollars is the, is this, my understanding is the state minimum and that's what we experienced in the past was that that's, that's the dollar amount that was available for us through the actual insurance claim process. And Jay might be able to speak more on that than, than myself. But I can keep you all updated, uh, once I know those actual dollar amounts. And then we can, we can go from there.
There needs to be accountability on these issues.
I mean, yeah, there, we're, we're saying that accidents took place at these, but.
Yeah.
There, I would, I guess that's a subjective argument that it's an accident. An accident is something that couldn't have been controlled or maybe he's put it there.
Avoided. And irregardless of that, we're still picking on the tap.
Anyways, let me go on.
I'll keep you updated as I know what the numbers are.
Thank you, yeah.
All in favor of the quote from? What's the motion? Gadget Construction. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. Okay, let's go.
So, the second item I had on the agenda, I apologize for getting to you late here this morning. I just received it, so it is a template document. It is a master agreement for fund exchange program. Used to be called, it used to be called Surface Transportation. Now it's called Surface Transportation Block Grant. There's been several different names, maybe you've heard. Um, and we have talked about these dollars in our road advisory, uh, meetings. This is, this is agreement to, for the process. This is not the agreement for the actual dollar amount. I'll get that, I can get that to you, um, later. I pointed out when I handed this to you gentlemen, um, the most important kind of part of this document is number four A. These dollars will be, uh, transferred through the fund exchange to us on ninety-four cents on the dollar. But then from this point on, uh, and we talked about that last year in road advisory, they changed the administrative costs of this fund exchange and future block grants, surface transportation block grants will be ninety cents on the dollar. And plus or minus, um, each fiscal year, it is somewhere around three-hundred-thousand dollars that we, we have available to do this fund exchange. I don't, I don't believe, I know, I know Commissioner Schulenberger hasn't, but I, I don't believe that we've done this since you guys have been commissioners, uh, either.
I don't think any of us have.
So twenty-eighteen was the last year that I officially did the fund exchange program because at that time, going into twenty-nineteen, if I remember correctly and going through that budget process, we knew that there were other dollars that were gonna come into our budget for availability and, and use. These dollars can stay in this program for up to three years and that's why I'm drawing them out now. We, we didn't know what the outlook was gonna be for twenty-one, so we just allowed those dollars to build up for three years. This would be the third year, so we need to receive them before June thirtieth of twenty-twenty-two, which is fiscal year twenty-one. So, that's probably why we haven't done this agreement. It's a three-year agreement, it's a standard, it's a standard thing. It's just that we haven't done this with this board, so. And then, and then again, I did it to you on short notice, so if you guys have any questions, you can let me know what they are, but. And then Melanie, the, the last page, they actually signed this one as a inter-agency agreement between Lake County and Oregon Department of Transportation for these dollars.
How busy are we? We're pretty busy, aren't we?
I would say so.
Do we want to go ahead and get this out of the way too?
Since we're here.
Sure. I make a motion to accept the master agree, master grant agreement with Oregon Department of Transportation for the fund exchange program.
Second.
Motion's been made the second, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. We could go forth and build some bridges.
Yeah. We'll, we'll work at it.
Judy's not here, so we're gonna postpone that one.
Okay.
Kevin, uh, Nikki's right here. Does Jay want to run that through or?
I can if you don't mind.
Okay, go ahead.
Um, so there are several of our grants that need an equity plan for the county. And so Nikki put this together to help out and have them file and so we are eligible to apply for these federal dollars. It's pretty straightforward, she got the language from CIS. Mr. Bailey has reviewed it, um, he had one minor change and, and then we have it for you.
So on the, uh, on the work session, um, agenda as well as the, um, the topic cover sheet, it's referred to as the diversity and equal opportunity access, but, um, the actual policy says equal opportunity and access. Is there anything that, uh, should we have the diversity piece on the, the actual policy itself?
I can ask her to add that, um.
It just says equal opportunity and access. And I don't know if there, if the grants require something that addresses the actual diversity. Do they require it to be aimed such that, you know, to be covering it? I see it as mentioned in other places in the actual, uh, policy. Several times.
I have no opinion, I don't know.
Yeah.
And, uh, equal opportunity access is part of the diversity.
I mean, we've always had these practices, you know, for the most part anyway, so, uh, down our papers, right? That's, that's what they're wanting, they want us to put it in writing.
I think it brings up diversity enough that.
That's fine, my personal opinion, but I just noticed.
Good with whatever, yeah.
It's one of those things.
I guess, uh, yeah. I mean, you're right, it's written on my here, in my papers. Why don't we just go ahead and add it, if you guys don't mind?
Sure.
Opportunity, diversity, and access to the policy and the.
Doesn't hurt.
We good with that?
That's fine.
Okay. Darwin, are you gonna take more than fifteen minutes?
No, I can, pretty quick.
I've heard that before.
Yeah, ten.
I would love to be back for the rest of my day, so. I'll just stay right here and I'll speak loudly. So the land sale, um, is up, meaning that we had in October fifty-three properties heated to the county. I prepared the attachment A, which is the list, which, uh, is included, um, in your board order as, um, attachment to your order, which in earlier year, you guys have approved a one-page order that says, hey, we're gonna have the auction on certain date, um, which this year would be May second at ten AM. The list is color-coded with, um, a, a key at the bottom, which has, that goes in pink or, um, core habitat. Um, it says core area, that's core sage grouse habitat, sorry, I didn't explain that further before. Um, there's a property that's out by the man camp off of Berta, which is actually, um, kind of surrounded by the rest of our camp, so that works out as a good one to hold. Um, there's, there's only one, a home on our list this year. And then there's, um, uh, three that are, uh, low-density sage grouse habitat, all, all of which are possible holds, which you guys often determine today, um, for approval tomorrow. I, I kind of leave that up to you guys. Land use-wise, I think it's, it's probably best to hold off on those ones and not sell them.
Even the low-density?
Yeah, even the low-density ones. And, you know, Commissioner Schulenberger and I spoke a little bit yesterday, we've spoken in the past, the rest of you, that, that, uh, we ought to pursue working with the other agencies on, on trying to, you know, you know, exchange or, you know, sell or whatever we can. These lots that we've held for many years in some cases off of a foreclosure sale, um, that's how we've acquired a maladra. So a couple of these are up, you know, by Heart Mountain and others that we just needed. And, and that's not a discussion really for today, um, certainly not in fifteen minutes, but we can certainly go over that at a future date to, to try to make some exchanges on properties. If they're really landlocked, maybe Heart Mountain or something off the Plush Cut-off Road, which a couple of these ones are again, where they, um, we won't by land use reasons be approving any dwellings out there. So even if we were to sell them, best they could be used for is grazing or, or maybe light recreational, you know, camping situation, um, without, you know, structures and stuff, so. Other than that, you know, there, there's a, um, this will definitely be a lower year than years past because we only had one home. Um, in other years, we've had, you know, three to five homes, uh, average. And so, um, they obviously bring in a whole lot more revenue. Um, I will say last year's sale was, was really good and we've spoke on that before, that all but five lots were actually, um, auctioned the day of the auction and most went for over the real market value, um, which was, was wonderful for the county and for the other, uh, districts that we helped get money back to them through three or four closures. So, this is the list. I, I would suggest, um, in my, um, summary, it says eight properties for a holding, but I would actually include those three that are in low-density, uh, for a total of, of eleven to hold off on the sale. I would then change this color-coded, um, list to just remove those ones, um, for what we advertise to the public, which we have to advertise in the paper for consecutive weeks, um, a list of all the properties. And it will say the numbers still, but they'll say held.
So, the, how many total acres of low-density or high-density?
For core, it looks like a hundred and five acres. And then for low-density, um, forty-eight and a third acres, yeah. So total of about a hundred and fifty acres of being held back. Which, you know, most of those are tens, a couple, uh, two-forties and, and a couple smaller ones, but, so yeah, it's.
Do we have any commercial or industrial planning on there?
Um, there were a couple, but they're the OBL lots, so they're, they're gonna be the hundred and twenty-five, or sorry, a hundred and thirty-five by twenty-five feet lots from there out off of Berta. Um, there's nothing up in, you know, Chris Tally area that's commercial. Almost all these are A-two or R-one. There's a couple up at Dead Horse and Campbell again, that, uh, Lake Upine Estates that's up there. There's, it looks like four of them up there this year, so. Yeah, unfortunately, there's nothing real great. Other, the man camp's a commercial lot that we're, you know, I suggest we hold on this.
So, how, how big is the lot next to the man camp?
It's just, again, it's an OBL, yeah, it's the twenty-five by a hundred and thirty-five.
Are they above against our man?
Yeah, it's within the man camp area, yeah. It's one of those in holdings that, uh, it's great that we pick it up now and then eventually, you know, consolidate with the rest of the, the camp there. Operations.
It's out on the roadside.
Yeah, it's one lot off of the, um.
It's in the back.
On the backside of the, the block that abuts the road, but yeah, there's an alleyway and then this lot. And then what would be, you know, around west of River, if that road were to be developed, but not likely.
Yeah, when I thought about some of these, uh, you know, lots that are up on Heart Mountain and whatnot, it's, maybe we can get into discussions with some of the agencies, such as the Fish and Wildlife, you know, to see if there's some type of, uh, they're interested or some type of an exchange possibly, you know, get into maybe a three-way agency exchange where maybe we could gain some ground near the ski area. That might make sense, uh, et cetera. Don't know if people will be interested, don't know if we can do it or not, but it was done in the past. So Forest Service gave the county, uh, the ski area in exchange, uh, the county gave land to the Fish and Wildlife on Heart Mountain.
The only last thing I'll, I'll say is that the, the one house, um, was owned by local folks and that it just needs to be, um, we're gonna work with them is my intent to, to try to get some of the stuff that's still in the house removed. Um, and a cutoff date of April first to have everything removed and then just say, sorry, we're, we're done having it removed.
Which one is that?
That's the, um, number, is number, um, two-two dash four-seven. It's the only one in yellow on the list, yeah. And the address is on the sheet there, so. So I'll, I'll work with them to, to, you know, get stuff out of, out of the house still. Volunteer crew that are coming up, get some right out to us. And we'll get keys and I'll show it up until the day of the auction and I'm certain I'll sell it for auction. Because of its starting price of fifty-five thousand and change, I, I'm sure it'll go over that and we'll probably end up having to sell that on, on contract unless someone's got a whole lot of cash because we do, you know, payments within twenty-four hours before we do a contract sale, which is a third down and then a third the next two years, so. Anyways, yeah. Um, no action today, but yeah, tomorrow, you know, approve the order and, um, and then just, I'll either change that, you know, to eight or leave it at eight and sell the ones that are in, um, low-density or, or, uh, change it to eleven and, and hold on those, those ones that are in low-density. And again, if after this meeting you individually want to meet, I could go over those three and the other ones that we're thinking about holding. The rest of the lots, you know, I don't see why land use-wise we wouldn't, at least the planning commission couldn't entertain approving the ones that are in A-two agriculture. None of them are real large lots, they're all, you know, forty or less and they, you know, none of them are completely surrounded by anybody's, you know, farm operation or ranch operation, so we could likely entertain, you know, approving those. And, and a number of these are in R-one, rural residential. It's always explained in the, for the ones in the forest, use some of those won't be ever approved for dwelling. So people buy those for recreational purposes, I'll buy Dead Horse and Campbell makes, so.
Up at Campbell, Dead Horse, you can't put a cap on them?
No, I mean, you could definitely build a structure under two-hundred square feet and store some things in it and always say, if the weather's bad, you wanna stay in that overnight, probably not gonna, no one's gonna be up there to stop you, but it's not to be a cabin, you know, with lights and running water and stuff like that.
Legal?
Yeah, not a legal cabin. I mean, the forest use zone just doesn't allow for dwellings unless you've got a lot of acreage or you can qualify for, um, a lot of record dwelling, which none of these lots would qualify for that. You have to own it prior to eighty-five, so once we obviously broke the chain of title for somebody owning it prior to eighty-five, so. And you have to be within a certain distance of a paper, at least. Nothing up at Dead Horse and Campbell would qualify for a dwelling, so.
So, eight, this, uh, twenty-two dash four-seven? It also has vehicles on it?
Yeah.
That are rental.
Before the reversal by Luba, they had arranged that Allen and his group would come and grab those two, but now he's not, he can't take anything more, so that was his word. As of this day, you won't be able to take what you wanted to. So, they'll either stay or still before April first, we'll try to figure out a way, or even after that, I, I may try to figure out a way to get them off it. There is a large water mill, obviously with the town on that lot as well, which could be as much as eight-five-hundred is what I heard yesterday, so. I don't have the printout yet from the town, but it's a lot and that when we sell this, those people have to know that and see if the town will be willing to budget all on, on that, but that's up to the town, that's their program.
Mr. Simeon, any other questions?
I have none.
No.
All right, then, I'll take you off, have more conversations we have around selling some of those blocks.
We're gonna get her done in fourteen minutes.
That's one minute, Sparr can give you enough time. Are you guys here tomorrow though?
Yes.
Well, I may give you a tick tomorrow.
Mr. Bowman?
Morning.
Good morning.
Come on up and have a seat.
We got two chairs.
Oh, we need one. I didn't move that.
Might just get a little closer to you.
Go ahead and state your name for the record. Darren Bowman, Superintendent, wanted to refresh himself.
Welcome.
Thank you, good to be here. Um, so kinda wanted to go over everything we've been doing recently. Over the last couple of months, um, staff out at work, we've been working on, um, Transitional Community Unit. The purpose of that unit is to kind of help ADICs, the ones that are going back out in the community. We're looking at a two-year span, um, to essentially release back out the community. Help them better prepare themselves, especially some of the ones that have been incarcerated for, you know, sixteen, twenty years. Now they're, they're hitting a minimum for that last, last little bit of their sentence. Um, and kind of trying to figure that out and work that environment a little bit more. Work that environment a little bit more. Um, well, we kind of dig with that concept of that unit is. We took everything down a single bunk. Um, we tried to kind of normalize it, humanize it as much as possible. It actually can be like a small kitchen and dining area in there for them. Um, we're working with V H S for any type of like substance abuse um treatment, something small. And we don't currently have V H S in Warner Creek. That's something we're trying to work towards. That would give us more positions. It'd give us a little bit um better position in the state too, as far as facilities that. Um, we currently can't take any of those guys, but they, we get some that have M H codes. Um, that have been, you know, dropped off or whatever the case, or they've had treatment, they send them to us. Um, so we're trying to find more options for those guys and they do get there, so that way they don't have issues and go back out. So we're planning on spring this year, we'll be able to open that up. Depending on COVID, because we're also using it as quarantine unit right now in between kind of construction, so we're flexible on that one. Some of the other things we're doing, a big push right now is recruitment um for the facility. I've got. I think five currently in background through Cessman or ESO or N T N phase for that. We've got nine hard positions open. We've had um with retirement and everything else, uh, we've had a couple more people. Uh, but we are staying stable at around eight percent staffing, which is good. As far as right now goes for us, that keeps us just above that line where we're not paying much out mandatory overtime, it's burning staff out and all those those bad things. Uh, so we're keeping staffing pretty consistent, which is nice. We're still working on field trips for the community as far as some of those guys have had longer incarceration. We've actually got three right now we proposed, um, that are gonna go kind of through a background. And they'll get voted on and then we'll work with community corrections on that. Um, before we bring them out and those guys are are ones that have gate clearance that could be on a work crew normally anyways or fire crew. That we would bring them out to community. It's just we're taking a different approach to them. Usually ones that, like I said, that they've done like sixteen, twenty years, um, they've been to a medium and now they're at a minimum. And it just kind of falls in line with that transitional community unit and everything else we're doing. Uh, we've done a few things for staff recently on first half wilderness. We've had some TVs and a break crew and stuff like that, just little things. Um, we've started, we've been fortunate enough to start a hot lux again, although like all the COVID lux. Because with the state, we have to follow certain guidelines and everything else. And we've been successful in that, so that's been that's been good as far as staff goes. We actually had a base sale yesterday. That worked really well. Everything sold out. Um, so a lot of a lot of positive things, working with the management team too there. Um, just kind of moving forward and trying, me trying to get stable. For one up there, I'm also covering security manager, which we're currently hired for, if you know anybody. Um, so that position's open right now. Hopefully, we can get that kind of short up in the next couple of weeks and then keep moving forward like we were. It was great having Mister Kane up here for the time he had, very fortunate for that, for his experience, everything else. Um, the staff up there, in my experience, are great people. Um, I like the community, like the town. Uh, so I have fortune at the state as well. Um, I have some experience from some of the larger facilities like Snake. Um, so I'll be able to take some of that, I think, and help out the little Warner Creek locally and kind of get us. Kind of on the same page with some of the stuff the other institutions are doing statewide, but. Then I think that's really helping, especially as far as um just how we're proceeding and stuff like that will be good. Um, kind of getting this to a minimum. Yeah, Mr. Sherry, has some questions?
Just tell us a little bit about yourself. What's your background?
Um.
Where are you from?
So originally, I was actually born in Ontario, um, lived in it almost my life, kind of right on the border, like most people do in that area. Uh, so I uh, you know, high school, normal typical stuff, um, went into the military. Um, in two thousand and three, got out in two thousand and seven in the Navy. Um, so I'm glad they beat the Army this year. That was a that was a great thing for me since Mister Kane was Army. So I got to got to poke that stick on the way out. Um, after the military, I didn't college for for a while. Decided to go into corrections, I had family members, stuff like that. And worked out really well for me. I always want to do law enforcement or something similar to that. Corrections is a great. I mean, it gives you a lot of questions. You can go community, you can go state, you can do all different kinds of things, corrections. It's not just basic, just not um a narrow scope of just like security. There's a ton of jobs, you know, opportunities, which is always good, so I've been very fortunate in that aspect. Worked. Been Snake River for about five years as an officer promoted, went up to corporal sergeant lieutenant. Um, I think I hit lieutenant by two thousand and sixteen, right in that timeframe, maybe two thousand and seventeen. Um, with the part of the statewide honor guard, um, which was a great experience and. Started really developing myself as lieutenant. Uh, I worked special housing in Snake, which that's where we housed. At the time, because that population's adjusted, it's about three hundred and forty-eight. And that's all testing level five guys, so complete opposite of what we have out here at Warner Creek. Um, I knew long terms for that. Was part of that process and kind of downsizing somewhere I knew. And then um the impacts of long-term isolation while I was there. After that, I was assigned a minimum in Snake River and I managed that for about a year and a half. Were able to work the fire crew, fire crew command or stuff as far as my role there. Uh, I worked on a lot of different initiatives there as far as just normalizing humanizing the environment at, for my facility at Snake and its co-located. Um, that was one that to me, it was great. It's small city, it's great. It's a big workforce for the state. Uh, they do canteen for the state, they do a lot of fire crew stuff out there, um, our physical plants out there, so really I try to emphasize on helping those guys out. I had a lot of credit with them, especially when COVID hit, when they were having some of those A I Cs go down and pull canteen for the entire state, not just half. That kind of helped me out, just being able to talk to them, because they were working extra shifts, they were pulling more time, they were getting burnt out. So being able to communicate with guys helped. And then a little bit after that, I was fortunate enough, um, speaking with Brad, he asked me about coming up here. When you guys found out you weren't closing, I was part of kind of the conversation when you worked, because I wanted to come help out, because I knew it was gonna be. It was difficult on the staff at that time, but um after you guys, after Warner Creek, I other stayed open. I could ask to come up and and kind of go into the I C up position and see how that looked for me, so. So come up on that and then you're out of the day.
So uh, we we talked to Mister Kane when he was in his interim basis there and uh he was looking. You know, we're at, we're kind of in that phase where they took away some of the programs. And now that we're staying, uh, he was looking to get some of those started again. Do you got any updates on any of the programs or what your what are your goals are as far as moving forward?
Yeah, like I said, the the big one right now is that transitional community unit. And and programming wise, expanding, trying to get V H S, we did get, I believe, a grant statewide for heavy equipment operating. School or something for to um access for the A I Cs to be a part of that, so we're looking into that. O S E, which is Oregon Corrections Enterprises Call Center, obviously left before. We've been in contact with them. They were looking at the next couple of months, we're actually gonna start bumping up our population again, uh, because right now we're currently sitting at like two-thirty. Um, our max is four hundred. They want to see a capacity of about three hundred for us to get that call center active again. And they've got to bring resources and there's logistical pieces behind that, because they essentially took our call center and moved it up to Durwich. And it's gonna stay there, but the bright side of that is the call center that we're getting back is actually a little bit better. Um, it's better, um, it's a different capacity as far as it's not like a traditional call center. It's more computer-based, it'll be able to teach those guys better skills, um, it's a little bit better paying and it's not a traditional cold call. The contacts of the A I C will get off of this one will be somebody who's expressed interest in in the product or whatever it is. And they'll be able to contact them and talk, kind of that discussion, instead of just cold calling, you know, lists. It'll be a little bit better situation, we're hopeful that it'll keep better retention too on this one. So it should should be a good outcome.
Any plans for firefight crews?
Yes, um, so we did, last year, we kind of. We didn't have any buddy officially trained, so we did camp support, although they were out all year, which was um local here. Um, we're gonna do one suppression, one camp support this year and then um hopefully next year bump it back up to two camp supports. Which is something we've traditionally done. Um, it depends on population. We're, like I said, we're slated for four hundred right now, uh, for our max population. It's been higher than that. Um, so it's actually scaled what they're supposed to be. Um, and that was because of the beds were removed. I think we'll actually train more than we need and that's usually what we end up doing, so that way if. O D F asks us for more resources, we've got available, we've got alternates, we've we've got options in that capacity, so. Um, you will see us having an actual fire crew this year though, again, for for some type of line.
That's great.
Suppression, yeah.
And then when we see uh potentially some more crews out in the uh.
Yes.
Public, if if uh are they for hire?
So.
Like in the past or?
Yeah, it's it's. That one, I talked to the hands um the other day. We're gonna try to get out this spring and do some volunteers and free work for the community. Um, I suggest you should be starting on that right now before we get into fire season, because that becomes our busy time. Um, so if you guys have any projects for the springtime that we can get like a five-man crew out. I have essentially the supervisor there right now, uh, once we hit fire crew, fire season, all that other great stuff. That that was resources dry up pretty quick, uh, because of obligations, but. We need to talk about spring and fall and stuff, lines down, trying to get out and help the community a little bit more and be be a resource for you guys to be an asset. Appreciate that. I'm also gonna face for hopefully another worker officer, which will help me out too, so.
So this next upcoming governor election. I don't think people realize how important it is and that, I know I'm opening another can of worms, but. If a certain person gets in there, I'm afraid they're gonna try to close the prison down again. What are you guys doing specifically to get our numbers up or whatever, our rating up? And then what can the county do to hope you succeed?
That's that's actually a really good question. So as far as what we're doing, um, if you guys look on the G O C Facebook page, do you ever track that? We have Warner Creek has been cornering the market as far as, you know. Uh, and that's, that's obviously for a reason. We wanted, we want to let the state know we're here. That's something that's, Warner Creek's always done great work. Um, they've always had a good foundation of security and stuff like that. We need to tell a better story on our side. Um, as far as the county, um, you know, with like those field trips and other stuff. Where are we? Are we to help you guys go do something in the community? That's that's what we would need from you. Um, those partnerships are crucial. It shows that we're active in community, that we're we're a big piece of it. Um, you know, Rudder Club's another good one. I know I've got uh Mister Dan Cliff and uh Mister Schneider to be a part of that. And we're fortunate in that, but we just need to tell a really good story. Um, I think. And it, like you said, it's a can of worms and we can't tell the future. Um, I think by getting our name out there. And really represent Warner Creek well and show them what they can do, and that's another reason why we're really driving ahead on the on that transitional community unit is because. In the department, they want to see these initiatives. Well, everybody's been kind of, with COVID, been kind of stagnant, so. Uh, my outlook on it is if we get out there and start, you know, striking hard, but still being within those COVID restrictions. We still show what good work we do, even in a bad situation. And I think that's that's gonna be important for us. To show, because the staff are are behind it, they're, you know. Talking with them, um, the feedback's been great, they're, you know, super excited for the future. There's gonna be, there'll always give me some challenges, but I think we're able to work around those. But really, I mean, your guys' partnership as far as like the county goes to community, that's gonna be huge for us too.
I know you were working with uh Mick Johnson and L C R I. Um, where are you guys with the.
So they present, um, Mister Hammond, they're gonna present that to our leadership team in April, I believe. And that should be, because we presented it for upward levels, now this is essentially Mister Stewart and Mister Peters. Um, that'll hopefully get us the final approval of you and we've also included it on some hot packs and stuff like that for request. Um, for the funding board as well, so there's been really positive feedback on it. Um, so hopefully here in the next month or so, we get kind of that final approval, we can move ahead on that. And that'll be something that I know the other institutions are looking at, um, but I really want to make sure we did be a part of that first.
Right, and I think it was one of those, one of those chips that we were able to play a little bit with.
Yeah.
When we were attempting to make sure the state opened.
Well, I mean, with, you know, the geothermal power that we have too, that puts us in a good light for everything in the library. Yeah, so hopefully, like I said, I think they're presenting on April, it wasn't gonna be this month, but we wanted to bring in uh the people from that organization. And have them be able to speak to everything, um, because Mister Hammond's turned up, he's he's got a good knowledge base on it, but he's not the expert in it. So we're hopeful that by having them there, they're able to answer the questions like they did before and really kind of clear everything up.
So with that, but is but the Warner Creek had a net zero on energy or?
Not, it depends on the options, because we've got a couple of options in that aspect to where we either essentially, when they set up. Solar power for that, everything would go back into the grid and there would cuts it kickback essentially, or daytime hours um itself. From the information I've got, daytime hour, we can either choose that option where everything kind of covers their cost during daytime and then at night we go back on the grid power. So when we put us at a zero, that our operating cost would be significantly lower, just like it with geothermal. Definitely, definitely benefit, definitely something else that none of the other institutions in the state. Or I believe the country can be able to say that um from from our research, so.
So are you considering battery backup too, so you don't.
Yeah, that's kind of what that meeting's gonna cover, I think, is if we want to store the power or we want that power to go to the grid. And we get either, like you said, that kickback or daytime hours, we cover that cost for now. Um, because that's kind of how I think that company operates, is those are their choices. Uh, we're trying to make something where. The A I Cs get some experience, they, we're able to have that assistance from that that company as well to kind of back up their product.
Yeah, there's a good workforce.
Yeah, build it. No, we've we've got plenty of workers, it's just getting it, getting everything screwed up, so.
Yeah, I think they're, you know, like you said, a third party there.
Yeah.
Just depends what they have to offer.
Yeah.
I think it'd be great if uh all three of us make sure that we get your contact info.
Yeah.
Today.
Absolutely. I think I got some parts on there. My security manager part, if not, I'll get some of that.
Sounds good.
Yeah, I'll obviously get some stuff out there right now.
No, I totally understand.
Um, but no, I I know we're, the institution, I'm I'm excited. Um, I know everybody else is excited as well. Um, the workers, the different sections. Uh, physical plant just picked up a temp hire and worked for the staff they did too, so that's a good thing. Um, the government mandate affected this on that one. Um, security, I forecast, I hope within the next six months will be fully staffed, which is actually something we've never managed to do before. And we did secure some other positions to mitigate overtime as well, so it'll be, it'll be good to get those filled as well. It'll really kind of drive ahead on some stuff.
Sounds good.
Yeah.
Well, we thank you for your time.
Oh, thank you guys, appreciate it.
Thank you. Can we go ahead and take a?
Yes, absolutely, that'd be great.
Nine fifty-five.
Hey, Julie. Good morning.
Good morning.
Do you, let's see, how long do you think your presentation will take?
I I don't have a presentation. I just have an amendment. It's just with funding, so two seconds.
Sounds good.
But I wanted to listen to what you have to say. I haven't heard what Bailey's doing, so it doesn't matter to me. I'm gonna stay either way.
Uh, well, well, let's go ahead and do, um, Bailey, go ahead and start your presentation. Thank you.
Hi guys, so I'm Bailey Guido, I am an early learning support specialist for the Douglas County E S D. And so what am I doing in Lakeview? So I represent two programs in Lake County. Through the Douglas County E S D and through the early learning hubs. And so being a part of that, we are part of the South Central Early Learning Hub. And the programs that we have are in. Lake, Clamath and Douglas, and the the two programs are called. K P I is mostly what it's referred to as kindergarten partnership and innovation. And then the second program is Take Root Parenting Connection. And so I will briefly go over the K P I program first, and so really. K P I is more of like behind the scenes program where we work to support early learning professionals. Pre, yeah, pre K all the way up to third grade is mostly who we work with. And things that K P I has done in the past are like partner with Dolly Parton Imagination Library. We help support that program and then we have also done. Early learning gatherings in the past, we're also doing the early learning gatherings currently with one coming up. That registration for that one just opened and. The previous early learning gathering, I believe we had. Three people from Lake County attended that one and that was right when I first got to this position and so. Going forward, currently I have about seven people from Lake County signed up to go to that early learning gathering and we're going to learn about. Self-regulation for all, for those early learning professionals at that gathering and we will touch on conscious discipline. Which leads me to another training we have going on for early learning professionals right now, and that is the conscious discipline training. And I have. A seven percent participation, no, I'm sorry, that one, ninety percent participation from Lake County. And that is not just centralized to Lakeview, I have, I believe, four. Professional, educational professionals from North Lake and and then the rest of them are in Lakeview. And I have had lots of contact with professionals out in Adel and Plush and a little bit of contact in Paisley. So I'm really just reaching out and building those relationships to get them. To do this free professional development and we, K P I really strives to create. This language across the board and so people working with children. In the same communities have that same language and those same skills that they can all build upon for kids of our community. And then as far as Take Root Parenting Connection, that program. That is more of a parenting education program, we provide multiple engagement opportunities for families and parents. Non-traditional families as well, to just engage with their children and and. Strive strive to be better all the way around when it comes to. Being involved in their children's lives and helping them grow up and. It's a really wonderful program, it has been available to Lake County for several years and everything we do is also free. And the problem that has, Lake County has had in the past with. Being aware of this program is that. When it first got off to a start, everybody was centralized in Douglas County and then. Somebody was hired in Lake County two years ago and they were in the position for one year. And building relationships takes a longer time than just a year sometimes, and then COVID hit. That person left this position and with COVID, nobody was doing anything in person, so they left the position. Just closed and then they reopened it and here I am, and I've been in this position since October. And things that Take Root is currently doing is. Babies don't come with instructions and that is a two-part workshop where the first workshop on February twenty-third is gonna focus on mothers. And then the second workshop on March second is going to focus on fathers. And it's all virtual and free and. Then we have one coming up called, it's a three-part workshop, Teaching Your Child to Talk. And that is going to be taught by a speech and language pathologist and it is also Zoom. And when we, a series we have going currently is Make Parenting a Pleasure and that's a ten-week series and. I wanna, I believe we have seven people registered for that class. No Lake County participants at this time in that one, but for babies don't come with instructions, that's coming up really soon. And I know that we do have three people from Lake County sign up for that workshop, so. What I'm doing is working, building those relationships and getting the word, the word out there. And I did bring for you guys today some Take Root brochures that tells about our program, my business cards and then. This is the K P I brochure and I do have it in English and Spanish and on the back it lists all the early learning. Resources in Lake County, the schools and then the preschools. That's kind of the overall and then as far as relationship building that I've personally been doing, I have been building a relationship with public health, I've been working with WIC. The WIC program more specifically, which they're really excited to. Start that relationship and they're joining our committee that we have and. Then we, I have, I went to the Food Share Committee last week or two weeks ago and they would really love to work with me on. Building a workshop, which is something that I do if the interests are there to do it. So I joined a work group with them and we're hoping to get something started here in Lake County in person. That will teach how to budget and how to cook healthy meals for families and so the food chair would like to. Build that with me and hoping to get that done. I did brainstorm at the early learning. I was forgetting the name, I'm sorry, it's the, we call it the pack meeting with my, yeah, yes, yes, there we go, the hub meeting, the the Lake County hub meeting. We did brainstorm topics there about what community needs are for Lake County and what they would like to see Take Root giving classes on. Things that have come up are like minimal biting, let's teach your children not to bite, which I love. Picky eaters and then. Sign language and so now that I have that list, I'm taking it to my newly hired. Well, I have one fully hired and one in the process, Lake County facilitators for Take Root and. One is a head start teacher and one is a Lake County School District teacher, so I'm really excited to get them hired on. And they, we're gonna take those lists to them and we're gonna see where where they wanna touch bases and what they wanna maybe teach. And get them going on getting workshops and I think that this program is really gonna take off when people are seeing. Lake County people teaching these classes here in Lake County, so. Because the biggest confusion is is the fact that I do work for Douglas County E S D. But it's work, I know that relationship building and getting in word of mouth is working because I'm getting participation now from Lake County.
Well, there's been that, you know, that confusion for a long time, just because it's really stemmed out of Douglas County.
Yeah.
Most part, I mean, but that's, it's been there, I think the biggest part for you is the relationship building because the change in people.
Yes.
So, but welcome.
Yes, thank you, I'm excited to be here.
But you're from Lake County.
I am, yeah, I mean, not originally, but basically I've lived here my whole life, let's see, I wanna say. I've been here almost twenty years now, so this is, and I originally. Lived in Silver Lake and then I moved to Adel and then I was in Lakeview, so this is definitely my home. Which is another great piece to me being in this position. Building those relationships, especially with reaching all the way out to Adel and Plush and then Paisley and North Lake. We definitely don't wanna just make sure this program is not centralized to Lakeview, it is a Lake County program. So, yeah, and like I mentioned, I did hire two new facilitators and that is something we do. Is find either subject-based experts and which I would love to find someone who is bilingual to hire on as a facilitator. To teach these classes because that is a need in our county. And then we do hire people on and we also train them, we have a training coming up. That one of my facilitators I hired is going to do it, I'm also going to be trained in it and it is active. Parenting for stepfamilies. And then we have another training for the Make Parenting a Pleasure and I. Am hoping to get one of my Lake County facilitators trained in that, because it is a ten-week series. And there's lots of good information there and then I'm also trying to build a relationship with D H S. So that they can give referrals and I've also worked with. Michelle Cotton at Self-Sufficiency to give referrals or recommendations to our program.
And this, and the early learning gathering, this is the one on the February twenty-second?
Yes, yes, it is, sorry that I have two trainings that day.
Right, okay, got it.
But yes, it is February twenty-second and that is for the early learning professionals.
Gotcha, okay, and that's here in Lake County?
It it is via Zoom.
Oh, it is?
Yes, but it is open to all three counties. Yeah, we're hoping to be back in person officially in the fall because I am Douglas County employee, I have to follow Douglas County protocols. Which is a discussion I'm trying to have with. Everybody that's involved, that I possibly can.
Big discussion.
Bend it here, like, I'm not in Douglas County, can we talk Lake County? And try to get more in in-person events scheduled.
Could you just explain a little bit about the three counties? So it's Lake, Clamath and Douglas County, which is kind of an odd threesome.
Yes, so from my understanding, back when it was. You know, beginning, back to the very beginning, is that Clam, or when. The state of Oregon said, we are going to distribute. All the counties and put them in early learning hubs and group them together. Clamath County wanted to have its own and it would include Lake because we do that with lots of other programs and stuff. And and basically. Oregon said, no, we're not giving any specific county their own hub, the early learning hub. And so this is how we're gonna group you, we're gonna call you the South Central Early Learning Hub. And 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 Lake County is kind of way off the trail from Douglas County and that's where the disconnect is. And and there is no really primary reason why they grouped us with Douglas except for the fact that they weren't gonna. Individualize counties and. But I mean, the the way they did it, I think it it has potential to work. In just a significant way here in Lake County as it does in Douglas County because. Obviously, they do have more participation from Douglas County, these programs do, because that's where they're centralized, but. Having me boots on the ground here, I I really do have lots of hope that we can bring up participation for Lake County. And as of this year, the early, there is an early learning hub for every county now in Oregon.
I know it's School District Seven, just recently accepted or got accepted or. What, eleven positions or or eleven slots or something like that?
Yes, yeah, yes. Yeah, it's, I think it's it's really great that. That these these programs are available because they're offered for free and we have lots of amazing information. To to distribute in the county and to build that overall language and so. You know, if we have people moving from Lake County or people moving out of. Out of Lake County. They have, for early learning professionals, they have all these professionals that have been trained. In the same areas and they have the same language to use for these children, which provides more stability and more understanding. And so that's one of my top goals is to is to, for K P, the K P I program is to get the educators involved.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
As far as the K P I, why why is it called K P I when it's actually Kindergarten Readiness and Preparedness Initiative?
Yeah, so there's there's confusion on the name and.
And it's always confused me.
I know. So so the the disconnect there is that. K P I tries to fund programs to get them up and running and then hands them off. They're not for the long term or the in the long haul and so you have. The Let's Get Ready for K programs and the and the Let's Get Ready for Kindergarten brochures and that is a big hype and. It was a really big program here in Lake County for a little while and we're on Zoom now, so it it's just hard to. Bring attention to it, everything's on Zoom. But. The Let's Get Ready for Kindergarten and the Let's Get Ready for K program is not a, an official K P I program. It is, it was in like years ago and now it's something that they have partnered with other partners. To fund and help get up and running and so right now, Take Root is taking that on. And K P I is helping to support them, get it up and running and. Maybe they'll need more support next year and so K P I will also help fund that if we feel they need the the support. And so this is me talking as a K P I representative and not a Take Root because they are separate. And and then and Take Root gets that up and running and now it's their program and in Clamath County. The school district has brought into the Let's Get Ready for K program and, no, I'm sorry, not Clamath, Douglas County.
Douglas.
Yes, so Douglas County School Districts have. Gotten that support from the K P I to get that up and running and now it's fully funded by the Douglas County School District. And but because. Take Take Root is all three counties, that when we operate, we do also operate to all three counties. And so I hope that.
Well.
Helps clear it up.
I guess, you know, it it always confused me when when we said K P I, we'd always leave the R off of the actual abbreviation. That was, it's a trivial question, I understand, I'm just, it's, we leave readiness out, yet we always put readiness on all the emails. So so I actually took the whole year to figure out that K P I and kindergarten readiness were the same thing.
Yeah, and and it it is, but it isn't, so we're trying to kind of. Make sure that the programs that in the past that have done. Ready for K stuff, that they're gonna take that over and K P I is gonna move on to something else, yes.
I I have no other questions.
Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you guys so much and I'll just hand you this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep.
Yes, please.
Judy, you wanna?
See.
Sure, sure. Good morning.
Good morning.
The fourth amendment, which gives us a little more funding for WIC. And looking at over, that's all that I see that was changed on there is we have October through June, WIC funding and increase. For our program.
Is that October this year? Twenty twenty-two, all the way through June of twenty twenty-three?
A work period July through June thirtieth is what the top says.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, so October twenty-one through June twenty twenty-two, okay. So till this June.
And these funds need to be spent by June, yes.
Okay, gotcha.
WIC program going good?
Are WIC programs going well, we're struggling because of staffing, we should have six staff to do WIC. Uh, we should have six staff to do WIC and we have. Four staff in our building and we're certainly only one is doing WIC. And then Lily George is doing well with. Um, and Northlake, but Lily's leaving, so um. Yeah, we are working with the WIC program to see how we can. Still qualify to get it with the limited staff. But yes, the program itself is going well. We have um our numbers, I don't know the exact numbers, but. Ariana says they're starting to pick up. They went down during the two years of COVID. I think we were the only. Um, public health that stayed open for WIC clients. Everybody else did um calls to do over the phone, but we. We kept our doors open in Saw Lake, that's why we didn't do testing. COVID testing is because we kept seeing clients in our building. Um, but I think what's gonna happen is I'm gonna take a training um and then we hired a part-time person. Who's coming on February twentieth. Um, she'll help in the front office, she'll help with billing. Uh, we're job sharing her with long-term care. Um, so she'll work four hours for us, four hours for long-term care. And we can train her to do the front office part of checking in and verifying. And it's all a check and balance. Um, Ariana could do it all, but for um non fraudulent. They have to have multiple people that that make sure that.
Accountability.
Yeah, yeah. So I'll start taking some training. I think it takes quite a while. I'll start getting some training done and then the new person will get some training done. And then we'll just go from there.
Was Hannah doing any of the WIC stuff or was it just Ariana?
Hannah was starting training to do the WIC stuff, but didn't, she she didn't finish it. Uh, Ariana is the WIC coordinator, but she's going to take a more advanced class so that she could be our breastfeeding. Coordinator also, which is what Jill Hardland used to do, which was what Hannah was starting to do. Um, so Ariana will end up having three of those positions. And then we'll have the front office staff doing one and I'll do the training so I supervise Ariana. And and then I think we will be able to continue for now. Yeah, otherwise, not much is new and exciting. We have the iHealth tests in. I gave some to the school. Um, we gave out last week, we gave out a hundred and eighty. Yesterday I gave some out. I was gonna give out a hundred and eighty and I think they only gave out ninety in the drive-through and we have one more. Um, drive-through that we'll hand him out next Monday. We were able to get in the newspaper. So maybe we'll get a few more people. I think I have a total of a thousand five hundred that I will receive. But we can also use those um for long-term care with their outbreak. Um, we can share that with them if we need to. And they're good until July, so I want to make sure we continue giving them out to people. I don't think that they're legal for travel. Um, like if the airline is requiring it, they won't work for that, but um people can sure have them in their house to use enough they want to.
Sounds good.
Any other questions? I haven't seen you guys in a while. Any other questions for me? We did, is I think we're posting a position for Northlake Verner and we have another position posted for us here.
Okay.
Um, and I'm not fast. Uh, I posted for part-time or full-time. Um, so I take either one. And then we did go down to four days a week. Last week was our first week we started. We're closed on Fridays.
Gotcha.
Okay, that helps.
That's a change.
That's a change and it is gonna, it is certainly gonna help with my staff. Um, and you know, Miranda's part-time. And wants to stay part-time, so she works three to four days a week, so this. Between the two of us right now, we can at least keep up with the nursing portion.
Right, right. And have and and still have that consistency?
Yeah. Yeah, well, we were finding that we would once in a while be by ourselves. You know, we didn't have enough staff to cover and you'd be by yourself in there and I just don't feel like.
That's not right.
Yeah, yeah. So we just decided to to fix that. We'd be going to four days a week. Um, Brenda is full-time, so she's working four tens. Um, and Ariana is not back to full-time yet because of uh daycare issues. Um, but we'll work around that and they're both taking the um, the Spanish. Interpriter class, so they have a lot of homework and work to do that they can do to. On that Friday too, they can come in and just keep the door locked and we're fine now.
Right, that's perfect.
Yeah.
Good.
Yeah. About it.
Thank you, Judy.
Nice to see you guys. And if you need, then give me a word.
Always a pleasure.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You lost your other person.
Yeah.
All right, guys. Have a great day.
All right, see ya.
So was Jason gonna get fit in and talk about either one of the ordinances or, you know?
Um, I recommend it.
Did did Jason talk to either of you guys? About ordinance one sixteen?
He talked to me last week about it. I thought that this was already an ordinance, but.
Yeah.
So what are we doing?
So he.
Oh, he made some changes. Did you do you highlight those?
No, they're they're not highlighted. Um, it was one of the things I kind of talked to him about. Was it'd be nice to know kind of what we did, what we're changing, what we're altering. Um, mainly what he says that he worked on was the uh. Um. The process as it goes kind of through the courts and everything, kind of getting back into alignment with some of the other. Methods that we've we've talked about using. Uh, the other thing is that he took out some of the. Uh, language around uh eyesore um visual um. Not visual impairment, but uh as far as the visual effects and such around actual nuisances. So he took some of that language out.
So why do you take those?
Well, because they don't really have any backing in ORS and there's no real teeth behind any of those. Um, it's language that we put in as a local jurisdiction, but really you it, you wanna keep. You you wanna keep it centered around health and safety, um, you know, and actual physical effects. Um, you know, how your land is actually affecting another or habits on your land are affecting another. Or how it's just simply not legal. Um, we're presenting fire life safety issues and kind of centering around that. Um. We obviously don't have any uh public here today that concerns on it. The actual hearings though aren't till tomorrow, is that correct?
Tomorrow's the last day for ordinance thirty nine, correct?
For thirty nine and the camping ordinance, yes, but it's the first day for the one sixteen.
Right.
Camping hasn't changed um since.
So let's, what do you guys think? Let's make sure Jason's here tomorrow when we open this up and then we can.
I don't, yeah, I I don't wanna do anything injustice, you know, and go over going over our conversation. I was comfortable with the changes. Um, I can tell you that based on, you know, the my final thoughts on it after I had my discussion with Jason. But uh I don't, I don't wanna be going down through those one by one because like I said, they weren't highlighted and read. As far as what changes were actually made and how this actually differs from the previous one. It was just, you know, points that we kind of pulled out and discussed.
Okay, let's go ahead and move on to your Korea membership, James, I don't appreciate it.
Oh, well, so um, I attend the Korea meetings, have. Since Judge Farrar um Gillen County told me that I needed to attend them. I didn't even know what it was. So I started attending them and there were some very interesting conversations being had.
Can you tell us what Korea stands for?
Uh, community.
Right, right there.
Sorry, Community Renewables Energy Association, yeah. I wanted to make sure I had those acronyms right, but yeah, Community Renewables Energy Association. And basically it's a tables mainly for counties to sit down and talk about energy. Topics, not necessarily always renewable energy because we also have the utilities at the table. Uh, utility companies. We have Bonneville Power and others that um that talk to us about capacity. Uh, what the capacity needs are, so it's not necessarily always focused around renewable energy. But the renewable energy developers. Over the past, I'd say probably five years, is what I'm understanding. Um, they were kind of at the table when I first showed up in two thousand nineteen. They have always been present um and largely the solar developers. And so it's a, it's a good round table to hear what they're thinking and what they're working on, what their goals are and what their issues are and what their problems are. And we can have that discussion, but the table is technically for local governing jurisdictions and counties. Um, cities sometimes ju- jump into the meetings because. You know, there's been a couple cities that have tried to go for like solar on rooftop programs. So they'll they'll come in and they'll they'll wanna talk about what they're dealing with. I've never been hindered from having, from being present at the table. However, Lake County has historically not ever paid dues either. And I don't take votes on that board. Um, they they like to hear from the counties, they like to hear from Lake County. Uh, specifically because of all the things going on with renewable energy in our county. Um, but uh, so Mike McArthur sent this, Mike McArthur is the former director of AOC. And currently the director of Korea. And he sent this invoice to us and Melanie let me know about it. I didn't know that they were going to send us an invoice. I thought more of what we were going to talk about is potential membership. Uh, at some point, I wasn't sure when Mike McArthur would get that to us. So he sent us dues. Uh, if we choose to pay them and enter membership with Korea. Uh.
Was like Korea the ones that brought our attention to the solar companies wanting to reduce the. Pay scale on maybe one.
Yes. Korea was the one, and actually that was a specific phone call from Mike McArthur who saw it and he wanted to bring both myself. And Derek DeGroot into the fold and make sure that we knew what was happening. Um. I think being, working with them is invaluable. If we don't pay dues, my heart is not broken one way or the other. Because I believe that I'm still going to be attending those meetings. I'm still going to be participating. I might not have a vote all the time. The only argument, if I could go back over, you know, like make, not necessarily devil's advocate, but play the other side of the table here. The only argument I could really see for us paying dues is because over the past maybe four to five years. Korea has become very developer driven. That is a a direct complaint from at least three different commissioners who I attend those meetings with. And the danger in that is that the the developers already have associations. Where they can sit down and talk if they're not suing each other in the process. Um, you know, they have OCA, they have other other eight associations. They can go and talk and everything else. Korea is mainly centered around gu- local governance. And uh, it it's a table for the counties because we don't really have a committee for this at AOC. And it's it's difficult with AOC because. It's so broad, you get all the power companies in play and there's a lot going on right now with mandates and laws that are coming down from the governor's office. From the state onto these developers, onto the utility companies and everyone's getting a little. They're wearing a little raw because of these requirements that are being not only just pushed on them, but ultimately it gets pushed down to us. And it creates this, you know, friction in our own communities because of these mandates around. You know, the bill twenty twenty one, which passed, it's done, it passed and what they're saying is that we have to get to eighty percent renewable energy in Oregon. By twenty thirty. And by twenty thirty five, we have to be at ninety percent and by twenty forty, we have to be at a hundred percent renewable energy. So these power companies are running rampant trying to figure out how to make this work. And they're pushing all that pressure over onto developers and developers are pushing all that pressure. Mm, maybe unintentionally, but definitely it's happening onto communities. Looking to develop projects to try and meet these goals the state has put put on the state. So Korea is going to be the place for these conversations to be take, to take place. It has been and will continue to be so. The only argument I can see for us being involved with them as far as an actual due paying county, some counties do, most counties don't. The only argument I can see is that it it makes us one of the counties that have buy-in. So that we have a little bit more weight at the table when the developers show up, whether it be Sun Energy or others.
Well, this is like I've told you before, this has happened to us before with the Natural Resources Committee on AOC. We could be on the committee, but we couldn't vote and. If you remember two or two or three years ago. The vote at the Natural Resources Committee was decided by one vote.
In legislative, I think actually was decided in legislative, maybe by one vote.
And we couldn't vote as a county because we hadn't paid up due. And so it cost us a major decision. And, you know, me just thinking out loud is is that sometimes. Paying for your vote is worth it because of some of the decisions that are made. Um. Because you can, you can talk till you're blue in the face, but if you don't have any voting capacity. They can go either way a lot of times, but. I think with the demands of uh renewable energy being uh pushed upon us, you know, by twenty forty. What Commissioner Williams just recommended or said that's coming down, which we don't have, but uh. This is something that is now pretty important and I think Lake County. We've, you know, looked at ourselves as renewable energy county in the past and we need to be at the forefront of this. If we wanna have a say, like you said, we wanna have a say in what what our future looks like, so uh. I would support the membership this time. Do you wanna go out and make a motion or something? You wanna do it, Commissioner Williams?
Uh. Uh, go ahead, that's fine.
Okay, I'll make a motion to uh pay dues for. Community Renewable Energy Association in the amount of twenty five hundred dollars for this fiscal year.
Second that motion.
Motion been made and seconded? Is there any further discussion? I don't know if it's for fiscal year, but for twenty twenty two, right?
Yeah, I believe it's just, yeah, goes through twenty twenty one to twenty twenty two.
Calendar year.
Yeah, calendar year.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Yes. Motion passed.
Okay.
Moving on to AOC. It was huge.
Just real quick, Chair, if I could, you guys did receive an email that I had sent to you with some updates from the last Korea meeting.
Yes.
You received that and you you got that as well, okay. Just wanted to make sure.
Appreciate it. It's good to have those because it kind of keeps us informed of what's going on in that field. The Bonneville Power one was a good PowerPoint.
It was, yeah, that was very informative and we talked on that probably for about forty-five minutes or so. We had a gal.
So we're talking about the Association of Oregon Counties AOC membership dues. Um, there has been an increase in membership due. You know, we use this CIS alone, which is the city county insurance, rebuild stuff. I'll make the money if we kept track of every bit of it. We spend a lot more. Than what our dues are, just in that field alone. And so. I have no problem with it, but if you guys wanna have further discussion. Last year's dues were close, right around fifteen thousand.
Last year's dues were close, right around fifteen thousand, and so they're up fourteen hundred bucks.
But we're getting the natural resources, they had taken that out.
Yeah, we, we, we're excluded from the Council of Forest Trust land counties. We don't attend those meetings and because we don't have trust land, we also.
But I'm talking about our natural resources, we used to have to pay the forty thousand dollars.
Correct, and Federal Land Management Committee is the four thousand six hundred forty.
Right. They're not giving us an option, I guess. Which is fine, and once again, we're paying for a vote until. That's the purpose. We have, we have to because it's already been this before, so. And if you want, we can wait on that tomorrow.
I do think, just to quit, just a point, I do think that it is still optional.
Oh, it is.
I, but zero, if we apply zero dollars, that would indicate the membership is not applicable. So I, 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 yeah, I, I do think that it is still optional, we could get out of it if we wanted. Okay, I, I, I know, I understand that.
Yeah.
But I, because we've had this discussion at AOC many, many times before. Because when you and I first came on in two thousand nineteen, we, that's not what we were gonna pay for. But um it's bit us a couple of times, so I, I understand, just. I think AOC is wanting to be mindful that, yes, it's still voluntary. But it'd probably be better for you if you jumped down on that.
Yeah, could we hire our own lobbyist on natural resources?
For four thousand.
For four thousand bucks, no.
So. It'd be a descriptor on the next page is pretty good. Said the federal land management, said the payment dues are directed to advocacy on federal land management issues. Funds allow AOC to coordinate with other national efforts, obtain professional services and conduct communication campaigns on federal legislation. Dues are based on the county share of the latest annual national forest receipt payments or successor safety net payments, so.
Just while we're on this topic, um Chair, you wanted to wait till tomorrow to move on, packed on this.
It doesn't matter, whatever you guys want.
I do. So I, I recently got appointed as co-chair on budget and finance at AOC. And AOC is seeing a cost going up. And I don't know if you got a chance to see their budget portfolio from the last AOC meeting, you saw the five percent. Increase and another five percent increase, it's looking between ten to fourteen percent increase in cost. Because of the, whether it be the COLA, all the other things and wages. We're not done hacking this conversation yet. There's been a number of things that have been suggested. But a lot of them have, are, are still, are, are still going to look like dues will likely increase again. So um we're not hap- we're not done having that discussion. Uh Budget Committee has informed the Executive Committee of what the issue is. How we solve it will be either up to the Executive Committee or the full body to vote on later. Um so that's been kinda where we're going with the AOC. Due situation, there, there's quite a bit of money in reserves. I, I believe there's over a million in reserves.
Right now it's like nine hundred some, some lodges here.
Right, well, there's, there's a difference of opinion on that too, because there's um. I, I, it, it, on the books, for as a budget, as a member of the Budget Committee, I will say that it's about nine hundred some odd thousand. But uh other members of AOC, other counties, believe that there's more there than AOC is letting, than, than AOC is being clear on. Haven't necessarily found all that magic money yet. But um there are contingencies built within the budget into other line items and other budgets. Uh so maybe they're talking about those contingencies, you know, and all really being the ultimate. You know, where those dollars are coming from. But some people think that we need to pull from reserves in order to make that happen.
I don't know.
The di- the difficulty from pulling from reserves to make that kind of thing happens, it's just kicking the can further down the road.
Well, but what, what only lasts for thirty years or so, for.
Well, yeah, only a few. But I know that on the current dues structure, that has not increased a lot over the past decade or more. There is no way that we can meet the growing increase of cost. Just can't. And we're currently short two people that we'd like to replace. But we haven't yet.
Want to be an AOC's attorney?
Correct.
Yeah.
Legal counsel.
Legal counsel.
We'd like, we'd definitely like to.
Dividing them of legal counsel. For three, which has been a good deal.
Right.
Maybe that's where it needs to be.
Could be.
And I think they're working on that, right, at the legislative part, at your level.
Yeah, the only, the only thing with that is, you know, I don't have that guy's phone number. And I have Rob Bobetz. You know, I could, I could get ahold of Rob and talk to him about AOC matters. So, you know, I don't wanna lose that neither. There's, there's a lot to it, I just wanna kinda keep it on, on you guys' radar.
So do you guys wanna hold off until tomorrow or do you wanna make a decision on it today? We have a pretty packed day tomorrow, so if we get rid of it, I don't think it's gonna be long to correct.
It's the future.
Um let's hold off.
Okay.
Um Ms. Melanie, do you wanna speak on the ransomware insurance and why do we need it?
So there've been a few ransomware attacks on counties recently, the past few months. We've had five um breaches in the past thirty days now with our personal accounts. They've been able to be contained, but we only have sixty thousand dollars of coverage with CIS. And the minimum cost to recreate our servers would be about a hundred thousand dollars. If we pay five hundred dollars, we'll have up to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars of coverage through CIS.
Five hundred dollars, how often?
Additional or?
Additionally each year. So it might be worth it, um we can always dip into contingency if we do get hacked. We have several layers of protection, I won't go into those on the record. For the public, just in case, but we're pretty welcome, we're pretty well covered. Um we have different contingencies put in place. But there's always that what if, and then keep infiltrating us regardless of the trainings and everything, so.
So Tohman County was the one that got hit hardest.
Yeah, they had.
They, they were, they were down for two weeks and their whole county. And then they had to pay, and so.
Like three hundred thousand or something, just to be able to get their stuff back. And Lynn County was hit just recently as well.
So whole counties have been hit, why?
They seem to be targeting counties, so and.
I think five hundred bucks is very cheap insurance.
Well, it's in addition to whatever our current payment is.
Right, yeah, it's in addition. And it doesn't necessarily mean that we will pay to ransom. But just to recreate and then it will take time if we do lose our data to recreate, except wipe everything down. And then build a backup from the remote backups that we have.
Do you know what our current payment is?
For insurance?
Yes.
Zero, it's included. The, the fifty or sixty thousand is included, that's like the base coverage that you give.
And that's included through CIS.
Yeah.
I'd be supportive of that too.
So, I think it's, do we need a vote on or consensus could?
Consensus would be fine.
So we've, we're all thumbs up on that, we can take care of that right away so we're not.
Will still be.
Dave gonna do his department updates?
Yeah, he had to testify at ten for the grant, I think he'll be here around eleven.
Why don't we recess until Dave's done? I gotta speak on the railroad today to testimony on the call.
And what, what committee is that?
Transportation.
Okay, yeah.
I'd have to look at my email address, but it's.
No worries. And Mr. Franz, he's going to be with us tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
Will that be for an executive session?
Yes. So we'll recess at eleven or ten forty six.
Okay.
He's here.
Dave's here?
Well, I'm gonna go to the bathroom real quick.
Come on in, Dave, are you guys ready for him?
Yeah.
Derek, you did good?
Well, we did good.
Camera's rolling still, just FYI. Okay.
You wanna dance?
As long as I'm not live.
You are.
Just found out that our engineers messed up on our airport project, but not a big deal. It's on them, not us. Found out we already get a hundred and ten thousand dollars for the next five years from the FAA on projects for the airport.
Good.
Your generals has got some competition.
Oh, yeah?
It's maybe Bill Hurd.
We're back in session at ten forty seven. Dave, you ready for me? I kinda wanted to run through what's going on in my world. And, and in my position of all the things that I've got going on, so. Uh all you, the board understands what, what's going on in my world, basically. Cause I know, I don't update you guys all, I don't, it's hard for me to remember, I guess I talk to you guys. So I just kinda wanted to briefly, I'm not gonna go into a whole lot of depth, I'm just gonna kinda fill you guys into what I'm working on. Across the counties from every department I have. Uh I'm gonna start with the airport, just a, a brief thing there, as you know, we've got a couple of things going on there. We've got a seat base project and a taxi, Alpha project of repairing the taxiway. And we're, we, we put in together that seat base project and our taxi aid, taxiway aid project. All in one, our engineers are working with the engineers from the VLM on that seat base and then. But what we're doing is just combining it all together while our contractor, our construction workers or our contractors, they're, they just do it all at once. So it's kinda mingled together, it kinda saves time, money and that. And I think all you guys were aware of that. As I said a minute ago, uh the FAA uh just let us know they'll be giving us a hundred and ten thousand a year. For project for the next five years at the airport. So not a whole lot, but it, it is a lot. To help, our matches help, you know, just, it just helps.
Hundred and ten thousand a year.
Yeah, for the next five years.
Do you think one of those projects might be an additional fuel storage tank?
No, cause uh we want, that, that's not under the FAA, that's under county, that's under us. We've gotta either go for a regional grant or something like that, FAA dollars will not cut that.
But that has to be FAA approved.
Has to be FAA approved, that they won't give us dollars to, cause we already have an FAA approved fuel tank. It's up to us if we wanna enhance it or not, they're not, you know, operation.
Has Tom got a surprise on with that because?
He hasn't, he hasn't put nothing in front of me yet, so. So that's kinda with, with the uh. Oh, and then we uh, we got, uh we already got approved for three point seven million dollars for our next project to the FAA, three point seven. For our taxiway B project, and that's already been approved. And that's huge, cause when we first approached it, they turned us down. Well, how's, after they found out that that was a, used as an extra runway for fire and all that, for emergency service. Farming, farming uh land, uh runway, I think, goes out, that's an alternative for emergency. So they reevaluated them, oh, yeah, and so they approved three point seven million on that.
Is that over, is that basically all in one sum, or is that over like two year period?
No, that'd be, that's the next, on our, on our scope of work or for our master plan, our next project is taxiway B. We're gonna try to figure out how to get it developed well, they figured it out for us. So once we're down with taxi aid, we go right into the uh scope of work on taxiway B and start on it, start in the pre, 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 pre.
Yeah.
Construction stuff.
You know, as a federal agency, they've been really good to work with.
Oh, absolutely, yeah, I haven't had no issues with them.
They've really helped us with our work.
And they really work with us, you know, they, they uh. You know, Tom knows quite a bit of effort, like with me there, Barry, they explain it to me real well, make, make me understand it. In my, in my level, not their level, but I can't understand their level. So that, that's a real positive thing that the airport has, has always, I mean, it's, we had a lot of support with Connect, you know. We didn't put in for any airport connect, but it was a waste of our time if we was putting in for Connect Oregon this year, because we got fully funded. So well, you know, we didn't waste our time, not a waste of our time, but we didn't need it, we don't, we'll save it for another time. Cause on other projects, you know, we, we wanna do that uh extension of the runway, that's kind of a big deal. Well, when we go to do that and connect still available, that's when we're doing for connect dollars to match our federal uh dollar. So good news there, railroad, you, you, you guys have been kinda involved with that, we got the Connect Grant that we're working with. We've got Caltrans Grant that we got, we got, we're still working with that, that David Anzer from Goose Lake Rail, he's working on that. And then of course the Christie Grant that we've all been working on for a lot of years, so. You know, for, to do the ties and the ballast rock and new rail and all that, and that's what we're working on now, we've been getting in. To, our next shipment is actually rail, rail's gonna be coming in, so. Uh, I'm going in, uh any questions on that railroad?
So the Caltrans Grant we already got, right? We've got the funding available, that's about four hundred and eighty five thousand if I remember right.
How much is it? Yeah.
Pretty close, I think, and then the, the Christie Grant, of course, we've all been working on, that was for the bridge approaches and the bridges. And then this Connect Oregon Grant is.
No, the, the Christie Grant, the Christie Grant, yes, or the ties and the ballast and the rail and some bridge approaches. We already did the bridges with the Regional Solution Ballot back four years ago, thirty four.
And the Connect Oregon ones are for actually the rail on the bridges.
It's, it's a, yeah, it's, it's a, a section of the, our rail that we're putting in to, to replace the rail, yes.
Right.
So we can use that. So we can use that as matched dollars.
Right. And then, that's the one that we're testifying.
Today.
Today.
Yeah, we're gonna, at two twenty today, we gotta do a presentation. Presentation? Presentation today, to see if we can get.
What was the Christie grant again? How much? Was it just for our publics?
Well, the, the, the actual dollars is five point two, five point seven nine? Something like five point seven?
Yes.
The total project's ten million.
Right.
And Petrobras is still working on the part of the money to, on our contribution?
Well, we got, you know, we, we got approved for that loan. We don't wanna use that loan all possible. And that's why we're trying to get these other grants and these other things going. The loan will be our fallback too, if we don't get it, and then we'll have, no, we're there, we just wanna find different ways. Any more, any questions on the railroad? Hey landfill, as you guys know, we're working in the red at the landfill right now. We've come quite a ways, but it's still a work in progress, which is always gonna be this landfill. I'm working on, at the fairgrounds, we have all these chips and we need to get rid of them, I'm working on using the chips at the landfill for daily cover. Not temporary cover, but for daily cover. We are putting C and D into our landfill now. Why can't we put chips in? It's no different than putting a load of, a load of chips that someone brings from the public in there. So it's just used for like, this is daily cover or weekly cover. What I mean by for, we do it, like we said, if we quit using our working face for three months, you gotta have dirt over it. You can't use chips to use it. But if you're, if you're gonna be not using it for a couple of weeks, which chips can use as a cover. It helps for vector control and all that. So I, I'm looking into that with the EQ. And that's kinda, and then this basic operation outfit, it's still valid, but we're, we're getting through it, we're making it. We're, we're adjusting as we go. And then, cell site, my cells, my cell sites I call them, T-NAT is interested in our cotton, cotton view.
Wait, let's, let's stay on that.
Oh, okay, sorry.
So we raised the rate for zero, zero hundred and forty pounds.
How's that going?
Yeah, how's that going?
Going real well. We made, for an example, with, with moving the rates, on, this is just Sunday alone, last Sunday, I did the figures here. We made eighty-nine dollars more than we would have without. And that's just the minimum. You know what I mean? That's how much we made, it was eighty-nine dollars more.
For that day?
For that day. And I, and I just did an average of all the five dollars that we did. We did forty-one, five dollars on Friday, or Sunday. And that's what we made by lowering the prices. We had some people drive off, come on, I'm not paying that, well, okay. We tell them that, you know, we've raised, we raised the minimum and then they slide, pay them and they go off. We've had about six or seven of that.
I think it'd be better to say that we implemented the minimum. We didn't have a minimum before, did we?
No.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, putting that minimum in place, I mean, like obviously people have the right to drive away, but, you know. We've had some email exchanges and so forth, and been speaking with some of the people that have come, had issue with that. I think ultimately, you know, I mean, bringing in a larger quantity of garbage when you come to the landfill is more appropriate for everyone. And, and saves you money ultimately.
Saves us money, if you think about it, saves them money.
Well, that's what I mean, yeah, saves them.
Complain, you know, the people that, that like, they complain, if they come out every week, well, they don't count. The six dollars in gas if they had to come out, so taxes is savings to them, if they think about it.
Right.
If they only come once a month, they save twenty bucks in gas, whatever, when you're putting on your gas money.
So Dave, you gave me an example where people are trying to maximize that hundred and forty pounds. So they're bringing more garbage to still stay within that five dollar range. So you're actually seeing an increase in garbage from some people trying to maximize that.
Not really, increased, but at one time, yes. In the long run, it's the same, because you, and, and probably not yet. Right now, we had some people pull up and go, wanted to know the weights, cause they wanted to see if they made their five dollar, oh, wait, forty pounds, short. They go, well, dude, I'll get another can, you know, you know, where it's by five dollars or more.
Did they drive away and come back?
Oh, no, no, they, when they're done, for next time. They, they're just doing the math, what they kinda visualized, and they put the pickup of what, five dollars?
Totally.
And we've had a lot of that. And then they were cool about it, they were nice about it, and just said, okay. We, we need about forty more pounds or sixty more pounds or ten more pounds. So they kinda get an idea of what they want.
Right.
And that, you know, they, they can visualize, so when they come to the dump, they know for their landfill, they know how much, you know, close to it.
And so our prices above a hundred and forty pounds did not change?
No. No, that's, that's where a lot of people complain, complain, you know, people bringing the, the pickup loads, well, they were getting, making ten dollars already anyway. Their loads, they, it didn't change. They just say they over, under a hundred and forty pounds, it didn't change.
Right. What we gotta remember to talk about too is every vehicle that goes out to the landfill. From the public is a liability to the county. And so the less people we get going out there. The more it saves us on chances of liability.
And there've been a lot, I mean, we've got almost car accident, we've almost had people run over. Cause those one baggers, when it's busy, they don't wanna weigh, so they'll grab their garbage and run through the traffic. Well, they run in there and a car comes out and they slam on their brake, cause they're trying to get through the pit, so they're one bag.
Yeah.
Seen that several times. And we're like, no, don't get out of your way until you get backed up in there. Ah, you don't have time to wait, well, you know. And this helps with that.
Yeah, we, we're not trying to discourage people from not coming.
Right, no.
It's frequency.
Right.
And, and the minimum, I think, helps that, solve that problem to a greater extent.
What's the minimum at Paisley and Christmas Valley at the transfer sites?
Well, it's two dollars a can. So you can't, you, you can't implement, cause you don't weigh it. How would you ever charge someone five dollars or, or even more for that? So, the transfer site in the, in the, in Paisley, they're, 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 they're moneymakers. Hey, you make money on those, if you just, if you wanted to go by pounds. Cause most people come in with cans, you know, those come in three or four cans, it's usually like six dollars, cause it's a, six cans, you don't go by the weight, or you go by the can. If there's, someone brings a bag in, it's two dollars, at the transfer sites, they don't go for a scale, so how do you?
Yeah.
That's where you, how do you charge five dollars for a bag there?
So it's actually for eight dollars somewhere?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Good.
Same thing in Christmas Valley?
Same thing in Christmas Valley, same thing, Red Fort Rock, Silver One, Silver Lake.
Right.
Be charged by the cans. You know, if we bring one bag in, it's two dollars. So, you know, one bag before was seventy cents. And that's why I try to tell everybody to transfer to the, Christmas Valley and all those. You're already there to what we're charging now. Matter of fact, if someone brings in a whole truckload, it's fifteen dollars a load. Or, no, it's twenty-seven dollars for a full trailer. So it might only weigh five hundred pounds in there, and you're, you're making money. They're not making money, but it pretty balances out.
How's it going with compliance on tarping?
None of that.
Like you're bringing your load out to the dump?
Well, right now, it's a warning.
It's a warning?
Well, I told the guys, I said, people who come in, if they come in, give them a warning, then they know, give them that thing. And then after, come March first, normal ones, it's gonna be implemented. I thought that was a fair thing to do.
I know you have people on Rabbit Hill and on Berta, Thomas Creek Road, and people out and people.
So, yeah, they're, they're tired of their road home looking like a garbage bin, you know. And like, and like I told you, I go, we're not doing it to make that, we're raising up those prices to make money. It's to make people talk to their loads. Cause you're not gonna make no money, it's not, you know, you only get three or four of those every three months that even does that. Most of the people did talk. But it's people that did come in and said, well, I'll just pay the five bucks. James or Jamie or, they, they say five dollars, or you, you know it's five dollars, yeah, I don't care, every time, I don't care, I'll pay the five bucks. But right there, obviously they don't care that there's a twenty dollars pop, they're gonna care. I mean, I would anyway.
And they don't necessarily have to tarp, cause they have cans they can bring.
Oh, yeah.
With their lids tight.
As long as it's enclosed, as long as the lids are on, if you, you know, that's where it's at, I mean, you can have the can, you don't have to tarp.
And I think too, Dave, like I talked to you about this weekend, I think we need to advertise in the newspapers, just reminding people. Of what's going on out there, so they're not surprised when they come across.
True. Alright, thank you. Yeah, that's alright, I just get hurt sometimes. Just wanna get out of here?
No.
Okay, so, cell towers, or my cell sites, like I said, T-NAT is interested in cotton view to put their internet service out there. Which is just sitting there vacant right now. Every year, well, every four years, BLM's going, you ever gonna use this? So again, we can hear the contract, cause they wanna get, if it's not being used, they wanna get Surprise Valley off there. But we need that power there, if we're gonna, you look, well, this year, I think I put a, a, a proposal on your guys' desk. From BLM to Cotton View, correct? And so, we're working on that as, as it progresses, I'll inform you guys. And once we go into the lease, then we'll probably get it approved, so. We, we renewed Fish Creek Rim, we renewed Dead Indian cell sites. I've got some cell sites on Black Cap that we, that I'm working on, negotiating new contracts, new agreements. I did have American Tower come in, they wanted to give us a one-time offer, well, they did, about four years ago, then they wanted to do another one, pay us out. But we're already in a, in a contract of so many dollars per year, and we gain so much every year from the cell, cell tower site. And they wanna change it again. And I, she hasn't called me back yet, but I don't know if I'm a hundred percent interested in what they're offering. And I can get that offer to you guys and see what you guys think, but it's really gonna be more of a pain in the butt for us than it is to help us, I, I feel. Cause we got a good deal now. So, but I'll, I can get the stuff put in front of you, yeah.
Until we get broadband figured out, we need to take a good look at that, at least have that placeholder, but, yeah.
What's the status? Now, you, you said that they renewed, we renewed the one on Dead Indian. Would, did our footprint of land increase at all, or is it just complete, straight up renewal?
It's just straight up renewal, it's every, automatic renewal every five years, it just automatically goes in the back.
Did they discuss anything with you about the potential for increasing that footprint of land up there?
Not, not on our end of the deal, not, not, we just have a building up there.
Right.
But no, they wouldn't, I mean, unless we, we don't have it.
Well, I have requested it, I requested it two years ago, but, yeah, there was no movement on it.
Yeah, no, I didn't hear nothing. Cause we got a building up there, sits empty. I think it's in at ZX and Rob Thor has some stuff.
Right.
Right, so. Cause all of our cell, cell stuff that we needed on the American, or US, or Solar One Towers, or it's rising.
So Dave, with the towers, some of the, the power going out on Black Cap, like the radio station was off for two weeks. And they asked about maybe a, a generator with that help. County resource or county.
Well, well, look at those up there, that's the power zone, that's, that's on them, because we don't charge the radio people to use our building after we. We don't make no money in our, 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 the one that we lease to the radios, or it's just a, they get to use it, and they have their stuff in it. We don't charge it. And that was done a long time ago. So, for us to help the radio state, I can't see, if they wanna put a generator, that's on them, the way, the way we always look at that. Cause we're not making no money out of it. Now, we do make money for, from like US Solar here and all that kinda stuff, cause they are, that is our property. And we do charge them, but they charge us too for our, our equipment to be on there. Cause like, it's kind of a wash, I gotta, I get a bill from American Tower, and then, then I bill them. So it's one of those bills. And it's like a hundred and fifty dollar difference, so good for us. So, that's just kinda the cell site role. Any questions about, or cell?
Uh, no, just, just a quick point, I know Barry, you've been working on the broadband stuff. Dead Indian footprint is quite small. If you wanna ever increase that, I suppose you guys could go for like an amendment to that contract, I would imagine.
I'm not sure how we do our foot plan, because there's buildings all around.
There are, so I'm, I'm not sure how you would.
Cause there's no way, there's no room, where our building's just to build. I mean, if we wanted to expand that. We'd have to figure out, cause we don't own that property, that we just have to build, that's for service.
Broke it. Far from that phase yet.
If you guys ever did though, if you wanted to build a larger tower, because that building is really small and you just have a pole, basically is all you have. So if you wanted to build a higher tower or something, you might end up needing a larger footprint plan. Anyway, thank you.
Next, parks. Parks and Recreation's pretty easy, I only have the Anna Rizworth project, I'm down with it. All I've got left there is pavilions to build, which we'll have those built here in March, so we'll be kinda done with that. I will be, we've got some stuff going on with the ski hill, I'm not sure where we're at with Sharon there. They've got, I have, or they have a state opportunity grant going on, that they're working on. I was gonna take my county opportunity grant and put it forward to the mayor, and they kinda took the projects that I had in mind for the ski hill. And they're putting it on this, the state opportunity grant, I don't even know what the acronym for it. So, this, this spring or fall, I wanna put in for a county opportunity grant, because.
Parks and Rec.
The Parks and Rec. We just need to determine on what, what we wanna do, cause if, if Ski Hill's gonna do the project that I was gonna do, which was great. I mean, they put it in there, great. We need to determine, okay, where, where do we wanna enhance these dollars in our park system? Lower Cottonwood, we got Drews, which we already granted that, flush, you know. So we just kinda need to put our heads together, determine on what, what park we wanna enhance even more, so.
You know, we've had a lot of discussion over the years about parks and recreation, you know, we actually had a plan from way back in the day that was kinda put together.
Just keep in mind, this opportunity grant, the county opportunity grant, doesn't reflect around trails, it reflects around campsites, camping opportunity, camping recreation.
Right.
To, to do this, you have to have campsites, whatever, that is okay. So you can't go do trails with it, you can't, it, it doesn't let you do that.
Good point.
So keep that in mind too. Let's see, then, on my marine side, my marine, which is all, which is lower Cottonwood. Drews and Anna Rizworth, not the, not the recreational side, just the boat dock itself, the boat grant itself. We got some repairs I wanna do on the boat dock at Anna, I wanna get a little bit more handicap accessible. Looking at that, there's some things I wanna do there. That's not under grant, that's just under our general marine dollars that we get every year.
At Anna?
Then. And then there's a little bit of, of rock that I'd like to put Drews. Due to, there's no water, and at the end of it, when people do wanna get their boats water, the dock don't reach the water, and they got a big drop off. So what I wanna do is, I don't know, bring in a four or five belly dent full of big rock and put it at the end of it. big rock and put it at the end of the ramp. So if people do need to get to the water when it's low, it kind of helps them. They don't get stuck. And I can't afford to see them in, so.
Might wanna make sure we discuss that with water users.
Yeah.
Before we.
Because now people do it. They get stuck and traffic, I'll try to turn the water using the outer boat. So that's just stuff I'm looking at. It, I don't know. It's just because we don't get a whole lot of dollars from marine. Very low.
Both of them both.
Yeah.
What's the ADA stuff that you're thinking about at Anna?
Just some handrails, some, right now, if someone got away with their wheelchair, they drive off the end of the the ramp. You need at the end, at the end of the ramp, you just put a box in where they can run their wheelchair, uh sit there and they can fish off the dock or by law, you're supposed to have that anyway for a handicap, but just so they don't drive off the dock if they're driving their wheelchair down the dock. Because I've had people ask about that, you know, they they go out there, but they're nervous because there is no bumpers or which that's what I would do, put bumpers all the way down the rail too, and then put a platform or a fence thing around the end of it. And then again, that's just plans. It's not set in stone, you know, we can change that.
No, I'm just thinking, I mean, you know, as someone who lives up there, you know, I always get the heat every time something changes. You know, because it's my fault if someone doesn't like it. If they do like it, you know, it's like, oh, great job, but that doesn't happen as often. So uh. So I just, I mean, I I've I've seen it. I I I don't think I've ever seen anyone go off the end of the wheelchair.
No.
But I have seen people drive a small Volkswagen Beetle out on the very edge of that and dive off the hood on into the lake. So it's incredible that they were able to get it back out onto the land, but um seen it. Been there. I've been yelled and screamed at when I told them I had to leave, but um I just wanna make sure I'm kind of communicating with you, and I have a better idea of what your vision is, too.
Uh, fairgrounds. We, as you guys know, we hired, we hired some stuff thus, as you guys all know. He's our new hire out there. He's doing a really good job. There's some stuff he needs to work on, but I mean, we all do when we first start somewhere, just learning the way things work. Where we've working on a water sewer line out by the arena or not by the arena, by the round up. Towards the back there, we put a old system in there. The with the cover or so uh lake desanitation don't fall through it when they're backing up. Got that fixed. So we're getting a lot of stuff down there. Just we've got shafting out. We've got this lot of, a lot of stuff like the board. I know the fair board isn't seeing because it was not in their face. So we're trying to get winter stuff. Trying to get that in this spring. Soon as the it warms up and once we get through uh March, we're gonna start working towards fair. We're maybe we're gonna turn water on come April. We're gonna make sure everything's working for the fair. I mean, fair's gonna be ready June first, if you want. That's our goal. And what I mean by that is the stuff that needs to be, yeah, we can't do the stuff the week before stuff. We can do the making sure that water lines are fixed, we're not having late sewer lines aren't plugged up, all that. So there we got a plan for the fairgrounds.
And you removed that fence and everything.
Yeah.
Along the highway.
Moved that old rickety fence that was falling down. And I'm not sure what the fair board is gonna do there. That's that's who they end up doing back there.
And so you guys burned some piles last week?
Yeah, we burned a big pile.
How's the uh the well with reeking by water?
Oh, it's good. One thing we got.
All pumps working good and everything?
Yeah, one project we got left is that we gotta run the strong enough uh electric electricity to the pump. We're getting by with what we got. This spring, we gotta run another phase of line to the pump. Just this, without a cake and a breaker. But we waited till spring goes to ground. Well, we couldn't get to it. We was gonna do it. And then with the fire, everybody there doing the fire right up the fair, we couldn't get to it. And then the cold weather hit and I just Joe McIntosh said, just leave it till spring and we can get it. It'll be fine. Yeah, we had medical issues. But we do need to, when that starts picking up, when people are really getting watered, and we need to make sure we have the right electrical wire to have your have your wire.
And I saw the truck driver who picked up the parts that were fixing the solar panels that don't point in the right direction. So that's eventually gonna get fixed.
They're waiting for the replacement to come back. Get fixed without solar.
Which could, which helps save costs. It's about two hundred bucks a month that we're missing out on. Fix, replace nine toilets, about nine toilets. We fixed the sewer line. So the first time in history, the fair didn't have a septic problem.
Yep. It's gonna be, it's gonna be even better this year.
Fix the water lines that you're talking about um north of the ground stands and between the, you know, fifth landowner, you know.
So it's got a whole box. It's got a whole junction system that if anything goes wrong, you crawl down in there and you can work on it. Jeremy did a really good job. And we did it with uh with no cost. I mean, few, but we had the stuff laying around. So Jeremy took the old brick and we had those old uh covers out at the man camp that are just sitting there going, using them. We took one of those, put it over the top of it for the manhole of the ladder you lock down there. You can work on stuff.
Remodeled the lift up orders.
Yeah.
And roll probation.
The the trailer has been all gone through, all the plumbing's fixed, all the heater ducts. I don't even know how whoever's living there, of course, survived because the heating ducts weren't even
Connected.
Connected. The heat, the heat was just gone, so it figured out. And they didn't, they didn't tell us, you know, that they had, we was wondering why there's electric heaters all over the place. Well, that's how we heated it with the pair of it. And all they had to do was let some know if you got in there. Put the heating ducts together.
Now, the leak that's by the women's bathroom, by the four H concession, is that still leaking? That's been fixed, too.
That's been fixed, too.
And if you ever wanna see everything that's been done, Jeremy's got a binder about this big of pictures, before and after.
They document. I have him even set up whatever he does. He documents it down. So we have our extra involved. And the reason why we did, the reason why we did, there are so many people involved in fairgrounds, in fair board, with you guys. There are so many people involved. It's just easier that way to help us remember and also, hey, this is what we're doing. Especially, you know, with kind of the this unique situation, how we kind of are doing this with the with all the maintenance, it just kind of covers everybody's tail. Yep. So if anybody questions, well, they if they don't feel they're getting what they think they should be getting, well, we can go. What do you mean? You got sixty hours of work right here in this week. When you would only have gotten thirty seven and a half. Any more questions about the fairgrounds? Okay. Courthouse.
That's pretty simple. I was gonna say something myself, but let's get back to courthouse. You're actually supposed to be working on. I was kidding.
Yeah, I'm here.
Yeah, I figured that was a next.
Just kind of thing we worked on in the last year. I mean, to be honest with you, the maintenance here has very minimal, mainly crisis management right now when things break. Because we we've replaced everything here, so it's pretty much all new through the years. Ten years ago, when I first started, it was water leaks, jail flooding, moral hall flooding, you know, so there there were just a lot going on. And now we we did the preventative maintenance program, so, you know, we still have issues here. I mean, it's not, but it's it makes it easier for us to do the parks, you know, because because back to the park line, here we've got to be responsible for the industrial park. We gotta maintain it. I mean, the man camp, we gotta mow it. Make sure railroad, we're we're responsible for mowing the railroad, even though we contract that. That's our part of of, you know, we gotta keep it. So there's a lot of mowing, a lot of outside stuff that we do with park maintenance. You know, we, every once a week, we gotta go check bathrooms. Wash told us. So that that's just part of, and I put that in with courthouse, because that's kind of is on our schedule with the courthouse. Uh, but some of the projects we've done, we we completed juvenile flooring. We tried to do through the years, we've done a floor year, you know, in a department. And we, the only only one we have left is uh DA's office, and I won't put a new flooring until that dog. Right. Probably put, but that's how I feel. I'm not even gonna spend thousands of dollars on flooring. Dog. So sorry I said that, so.
No, I'm sure.
No.
Don't worry, sorry.
What's happening with that?
Is that your your can opener or what?
Do we need to send a letter to the Derby General's office?
Yeah. I've got a draft of it in my office.
Let's get back to it.
Okay. Sounds good. I have consensus from my board.
So the juvenile floor is done. Looks really nice. You guys get a chance, go down and look at it. I mean, they still got some stuff. Uh, one of the counselors, his father-in-law passed away, so he hasn't been there, and he's cleaning up the mess, but he will this week. So if you get a chance, go in and look at it. Painted the men's and women's bathroom on this main floor up here, which should have been done a long time ago, but we finally got to it. Looks really good. We're continuing doing our general maintenance, our preventative maintenance schedule with you guys. Janitorial, uh, we've kind of revamped it or whatever you wanna do that. We kind of changed it up a little bit. It's gonna be, we're actually interviewing Thursday for the janitorial job. Everybody out, can see you. Three. Four. We're only interviewing three. And then we can finally completed our lexicon box out there in the yard. I want you guys to know that. That's all complete. And then I would talk about the DA floor. We need to do some work in one of the bathrooms in the La by the La Library. We need to redo that, which that's what we'll get to. And then I had to remove a tree. We had to have have a tree removed down here this year. We think I always like to tell people when I'm removing a tree, because sometimes people don't understand why we're removing the tree. They don't like it. But when it's about to fall over on cars and stuff. I got another one. I gotta do that big one right over the sheriff's. That's not healthy. If you look at saying clear out the middle, it's clearing almost to the sidewalk across the street.
Right.
So we need to look at that to some point. That's the end of the road. So. So that's kind of in hand and uh.
So that's like, we need to find use more jobs.
Like maintenance at the museum.
Now we got, yeah, so we got that.
Looking at the ramp.
We're we're looking into that. It it it's hard to put a handicap ramp there because of the distance from the road to the museum. So we've got to come out with another plan. We're not gonna be able to go off where it is now, what I'm thinking is going off south side, kind of go in that way where you can get your, because it's an inch per, it's an inch per twelve inches. Yeah, and that's not a whole lot of time. If we were to do where it is now, it'd be in the center of the E Street. So you just kind of gotta figure that out, get it engineered, and then we'll work on that. If I just to repair the one we got now, we might be able to get away with it, but.
But it doesn't mean the.
It don't mean, I mean, we, I don't know, that that grandfather thing, that's kind of went to the wayside. There is no such thing as a grandfather thing anymore. It's grandpopery. Especially if you're gonna have to tear it down to rebuild it. Okay, any other questions? I have these things out.
Hey, I just wanna say I really appreciate you coming and giving us the department update today.
Well, it was time, because I know I don't tell you guys, there's probably something gone that you probably didn't even know that I dealt with.
I know. You're terrible at communicating, but I really appreciate you.
As long as, as long as you're not getting complaints about me, then it's okay, right?
I just, yeah, it wasn't, but.
Well, I think the thing that maybe we just need to cover too is we're really working hard with DEQ on landfill.
Yes. Well, I might as well talk about it. I met with DEQ yesterday. Yesterday, no?
It was last week.
Yeah, last week. I can't remember.
Yeah.
Now, if you can get my age. And and then, and when when they did that closure on the four twelve permit closure at the landfill, they started this, Kevin Hawk started, turned in all this stuff, right? And that in the transition of not only the county switching managers, DEQ switch people, so they went through nine people from the time Kevin Hawk was down till I was down, there were nine people that we counted up yesterday. I met with Kevin yesterday to go over some of this. There was nine people that were working. He gave me the names of the stuff that he sent in, the closure, construction plans and all that. But I never gone back to, God has can't find him anywhere. The DEQP, he apologizes and says uh we can't find it. We don't know. And then they switched to offices, but this COVID and everything, they just, so they lost. So it's just much as, but anyway, we we've got to go back to and do some stuff on the closure that wasn't done. When you do a closure, it's like a, it can be anywhere from seven to ten year process. It's not a, hey, we're gonna go close that three foot of dirt and be done. Well, there's testing to be done, all kinds of testing. I mean, you gotta do a layer, you got to do an uh I think I lost the name of it, a test that you have to check for your nitrogen into the soil to make sure the growth, that things are gonna grow there when you seed it, when you get your three foot. You know, because you might, that top layer might have enough nutrients in it, but that layer underneath it might not. So there's a lot of tests that you have to do as you're doing it. I mean, it's a, it's a step. Okay, you got that then, and then you go to that. Once you get that approved. And that wasn't done there, of course. It was, once, once everything got going, and they just took three foot of dirt and covered garbage. Well, it was, it's not even elevation. I mean, some of us, we're eight foot high. Likely, the DEQ is gonna let us, they're gonna exempt that. They don't care about the elevation. But we do have to have three foot of cover over. And.
Appropriate cover.
Appropriate cover. So now we're, tomorrow I go out and drill eighteen holes. We're doing tests. We're trying to do everything that takes five years to do all in one day. So it's kind of a, it's a pain. And what we need to do is slow down. We didn't need to hurry up with covering. We're okay. We're in our guidelines. Well, for some reason, somewhere in between that.
Systems.
Everybody.
Communication.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And not only with the county, but DEQ as well.
Yeah.
But.
Right.
We're on the right track. We're on that. The DEQ is totally on our side. They're willing to help us in any way they can. As long as we show progress of doing it. If we sit there and go, oh, they don't care, and not do nothing, well, then we're gonna get hit with a fire. We are gonna get hit with a warning, a fix-it warning, letter stating you're out of compliance, not out of compliance, you didn't follow the right procedures to cover this. Do it right. If they can get all the tests and all that.
But they have to let us know that just for the chain of.
Well, exactly. Because he didn't wanna do it. Todd told me, he goes, I don't wanna do this. I go, no, that's, that's what you do.
Yeah.
All it does is motivate us and it just gives us fixing. It makes us fix it.
Right.
It's not a bad thing. Yeah, you, you know, we got it on our record, but still.
Well, maybe we'll find the use for some of those chips, too.
On that, yeah. I I wish we weren't putting C and D in, C and D in the pit, because somewhere along the way, someone changed that, started doing it.
It helped with the soil there on those cover, on that cover, so, you know, we had to use it somewhere in those layers. Rearrange things, great, so.
Well, we have DEQ's really working with us, and then I still got the tire issue. I cannot, and I talked to the recycle guy. He said, oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Tried calling, no, no callback, no nothing. So we're gonna start hauling tires.
Yep.
And that's what I'm trying to figure out. We just, if, if we show that we're starting to remove them, the EQ's gonna leave us alone, but if I sit on them, then they just keep getting bigger and bigger. So what I want to do, I want to take the tires we got, leave them there, don't add no more tires to, except for all the stuff we getting out. And, and work on this pile, and then when this, this pile over here gets to a hundred tires. Get them out of here, or less. I mean, if I take a trip, throw some in and keep that. And, you know, just, just keep the EQ on. Because I've got until September to get tires on it, because I was warned in September. He said, you got a year to get, we got here. And, and when it gets closer, I will call. This is a different DEQ, but this isn't the same Todd has.
This guy, yeah.
Area fire stuff, area, he does tires. So just stuff that, I gotta start hauling, and I'm not sure, but throwing the aqua picket, take a trip.
Appreciate it, Dave. Good work.
Thank you, David. And then, and the moral of this is, I even like that, said this to you, I mean. I know you guys are busy, but I also need your guys' help too. Like, you know, sometimes I don't have answers, but I can't think it's, I mean. You guys are, you're doing what you can, but I do, I do need you guys to think about things too and help me too.
Right.
Whatever that is, I mean, it's, it's, uh, there's a lot sometimes that it ain't. I mean, I know, obviously I can handle it, it's just sometimes. I, I need help with an answer, because I don't always have the answers.
Well, you're taking a vacation there, so.
Oh, yeah.
By the time you get back, we'll have it all fixed.
Done, done, I want to say, okay, good. I'll come back to this here, smooth as fire, right?
You said it, not me.
And I had, just so you guys, put your notes, I'm leaving the twenty eighth and I'll be back on the ten. And I'll be quite honest with you, I probably won't think of you guys at all, mine's gone.
That's not true.
You guys' ball face line.
No, it is. I'll be wondering what all three of you guys are doing.
How we messing everything up.
Yeah, what kind of circus I'm gonna come back to.
No. That's your imagination.
Yeah. Anyway.
Damn, do you guys have anything else for the good of order?
Nope.
I think that if Darwin comes and sees us tomorrow, we need to talk about our renewable energy committee. I still think that there's not clear direction. And we need, I know you gave a list to that group. But I don't think they still don't quite have clear direction on what their challenge to try to come up with. I might be thinking about that a little bit. Hey, you guys.
Thank you.
And I'll need, will you get in touch with Jason to make sure he's here?
Um, can we talk about this after meeting?
Sure, yeah. So as meeting goes, eleven, twenty, or forty, we're in, I'm sure, thank you. I just gotta prepare for that test. We should make sure that's on first.